Okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I'm sorry, we're a couple minutes late trying to sort things out here. We'll take a roll call Lynn and then we'll have respects to the flag.
Okay. McDonald?
Here.
Flood?
Here.
Breakfield?
Here.
Ferrari?
Here.
Curtis?
Here.
Moore?
Here.
Mocheer?
Here.
Granger is excused, Mador is excused, Kerry Hilden? Hildendorf? Sorry, Ashley Ross had emailed to be excused, Tanya Wapo also emailed.
This part of them is stuck in Oxford traffic.
Okay.
I cut the side roads together. I don't know, I just did. I didn't know where I was going.
Okay. So with that, respects to the flag. Do you lead us on?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I want to say stay standing for the invocation and it's gonna happen one day. I'm gonna do it every time. They'll say, okay, you win.
Okay.
Well, you got me to stay standing.
Okay, just for purposes, we have a new member from the village of Lake Orion, Nancy Mocheer. And if you don't mind Nancy, we'll just go around the table and introduce ourselves and you probably won't remember everybody the first time around. But Mike, we'll start with you and go around counterclockwise.
Mike Breakfield, I mean Mike Flood.
Can you go this way?
Which way do you want to go?
Kerry Hildendorf, Orion Township trustee.
Joe Ferrari, Oxford Township treasurer.
Jack Curtis, Oxford Township supervisor.
This is Rachel, she's with the Noda organization and Lynn Gustafson is our
Sure, I know.
Gromaski, force of habit, too many years doing this.
Yes.
Is our director. I'm Mike McDonald, I'm the treasurer in Addison and also the chair of the Noda committee board.
I'm Ed Breakfield, trustee Addison Township.
I'm Bill Moore, president at the Leonard Village Council.
Very good. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so the board has before it an agenda for this meeting. Are there any edits? Otherwise approval would be in order.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Or.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the approval of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, the agenda's approved. The board has received the minutes of our previous meeting.
Chairman, I move to approve the minutes as submitted.
I'll second.
Okay, there's motions been made. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Minutes are approved.
When Lynn finishes, I'd like to make the motion to receive and file. I beat her. I did it before she even read the director's report.
Okay. I'm going to call on our director to present her report.
Yes, good afternoon, everybody. So just for September, we had 93 oh five rides and we still are in need of drivers. We're not meeting 100% of our needs right now at peak times, so we're in the process of training six new drivers that we hired. There's just key times, early morning and in the afternoon, that just don't have the capacity for everything right now, but we're working on trying to accommodate as much as we can.
What do they do, just stop by the office and fill out an application?
A lot of it's online now.
It's online.
It's mostly majority.
Noda online.
Fill it out and the demand has just been really increasing.
You can work with them and customize their hours?
That's what I was gonna ask is maybe nobody wants to work just three hours though? Or is that what we're looking for?
Oh, no, no, we're hiring.
The other thing I was thinking, I was listening to some people is they don't want to work eight hours.
Right.
I don't want to work afternoons.
Yes.
I can work from five to nine. I can work from seven to two. Do you customize the hours?
We do, and actually all of our part-time, the ones that we're hiring right now, we're only hiring them primarily for five, five-hour days. So we're doing like 25 hours, so five hours.
When is the biggest need?
So we have in the morning like a six to 11:00 and then in the afternoon like a two to, you know, like doing varying ones to the evening. So we're hiring primarily the five-hour shifts and we're kind of just putting it where our key ride, you know, demand is, but.
Do you have to have a chauffeur's license?
You do, you do. But that's really easy to get, it's not like a CDL, you know, it's just a 10-question, I think.
Let's see, Jack is filling out the application right now.
And we have enough vehicles.
He's a well-known fighter.
Poor boy.
We are somewhat limited with vehicles, but what we're doing is vehicle sharing, you know, so we'll do like a morning and an afternoon routes with the same vehicles, you know, so we're double using those, but.
What is that, nota.com or?
Ride nota dot org.
Ride nota dot org.
Mm-hmm. All right, looking forward to your application there, Jack.
Yeah, I was gonna say, we'll put it on our Facebook.
Okay, sorry to interrupt Lynn. Go right ahead with your report.
Ride nota dot org.
That's right. For the building expansion, still haven't received our final plans yet from our architect. There, I spoke with him today. We're supposed to be getting the final plans on October 27th is the date that they gave me, which is then they're gonna go for the permits and then our construction manager can then go back out for bid. So it's been taking longer than I was hoping unfortunately, but we did do a, you know, we can talk about it, that's just kind of where it looks like as far as timing. Our IGA, we have, we'll be talking about that as well, but it looks like our Noda attorney and the attorneys for three townships have all reviewed and approved the agreement that we have before us tonight. And then the vehicle camera project spoke to Smart today and they just began to review this, even though they've had it for over a month, our final documents that we sent them. And they're supposed to get it to us by Monday and we're hoping to post it next Wednesday. So, and keep it out there for a month. So looking forward to that. With our Oakland County transit contract, that is currently, Emma's actually attending the ad hoc committee at the Oakland County right now. It's the first level approval before it goes to the Board of Commissioners. It's a five-year contract where we had a three-year prior to that and that's, it looked like it was going through, but there were some questions on whether they want to do a three-year contract or a five-year contract when I was watching it online before I left, but I didn't see the final decision. And then we just have the transit planning, which we can talk about. It's on the agenda. Okay, thank you.
Okay, anybody got any brief question to Lynn about her report?
I'll second Jack's motion to receive and file.
Jack didn't make that motion, I did.
Okay.
Okay, motion, well, so far nobody has. Whoever makes the motion needs to speak up.
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
We need new leadership. Okay, I'll say no more. Okay, we have a motion in a second. No questions on the motion, all in favor of receiving and filing the director's report, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, report is filed. Thank you. Public comments? Public comments, hearing none. We'll move on then to our number eight, which is the approval of financial activity. Eight A, the informational portion, what's the pleasure of the board?
So I'll go to receive and file.
We have a motion in a second to receive and file. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Moving on then to the approval of bills for September of 2025. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I can make a motion to approve the bills to be paid in total for September 2025, or total 673,970.15.
I'll support that.
Okay, we have motion in a second. We'll need a roll call vote for this, please Lynn.
Okay. McDonald?
Yes.
Flood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Ferrari?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mocheer?
Yes.
Hildendorf?
Yes.
Very good. Motion carries. Move on to the 2026 budget adjustments to match the Oakland County contract. Lynn, I'll ask you to do the honors on that.
Yeah, so the board, the Noda board approved the 2026 budget last month and then we were working with the contracts and with Oakland County and we did have some changes in the last month. And so I just wanted to change the Noda budget so that we're equaling the one that Oakland County has before them. So it's basically, it's on eight C and it's an increase in revenue of 677,548. It brings our total revenue and expenses from 12 million 912,402 to 13 million 579,950. The increase is related to a carryover that we are taking for our building renovations, paving projects, camera, that we didn't finish in 25 that we're bringing over to 26. And under Eli Cooper's recommendation, he suggested that we added two additional transits to make our spare ratio 20%. So we added two, two of those as well. And we also adjusted our LBO because the state, we had budgeted for a 5% decrease in LBO because we were anticipating reduction, but the state did come through and pass it that kept LBO, our rate was whole, so we were able to bring that back up.
So for the uninitiated, LBO is?
Oh, local bus operating, I'm sorry. It's a
That's okay.
It's a match that the state, it's a percentage that, that we get based on our operating expenses and it's a set percent. And then there's a set percent for rural and a set percent for urban. We have both. And it's roughly about 30% of match that we get for state operating every year. So it's a continual grant. It's something that we'll get in continuity, but that rate changes. So that was good. We were really happy that there was a lot of people fighting for LBO. And so I think a lot of, and I, Donnie Steele was one of the ones that was there helping, trying to get us that transportation budget. So we appreciate all the help from that. So that's, that's basically what the changes are with the adjustment, so.
Last question, Lynn. The motion, did you want to increase your, adjust the budget to reflect the 13,579,950?
That's correct. It's kind of confusing the way I had it, yes.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you.
In order for it to match the Oakland County.
Thank you.
For 2026.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Breakfield, are there any questions on the motion? If none, if none, we're going to ask for approval of the amended 2026 budget to reflect the 13, 13 million 579,950 total.
Correct.
Okay, well, can we have a roll call, please Lynn?
Sure. McDonald?
Yes.
Flood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Ferrari?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mocheer?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Hildendorf?
Yes.
Okay. Welcome, Chris.
Good to see you.
We have a new member from the village of Lake Orion.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, very good. All right, moving on then to old business, intergovernmental agreement. As Lynn indicated in her initial, in her report, it appears that we have approval, not official approval, but that all of the township communities and some of the village communities have agreed with the proposed language. Is there anything we need to add to that, Lynn?
No, I haven't received any other additional comments that, you know, from all I understand that all the parties that have gotten feedback from are in agreement.
Okay, so at this point, a motion would be in order for the Noda board to recommend to the member communities, being the original communities that organized Noda, to approve the agreement that they've seen, so that we can get that signed and back to us for our next meeting.
So moved. Or. When you say sign, Mike, you mean the?
The approval of the board.
It's on our agenda. We can put it on for Monday. I know this is not the last agenda, but it gets taken off.
Yeah.
I was gonna be on the 12th of November.
Which is fine, you know, most of us meet once a month, so that'll work for the village of Leonard.
Yeah, I get it done Tuesday.
Work for Addison.
I get it done Thursday.
Lynn said we had till the end of the year for you to get this.
Right, right, yeah. Ideally, we'll meet, you know, the same third, third week in November and we'll have our ducks in a row. So, okay, so.
Yeah, just a comment that Jack and I worked, we share an attorney.
Right.
Thank you Lynn for your efforts in getting, we had some tweaks, but we're, we're satisfied. Our goal, and I think Addison shared the same, is to protect, making sure that we are protecting the original communities, Addison, Oxford and Orient's investments, and that's reflected in this intergovernmental agreement. So that's, that's what, that's what the tweaks reference.
Yeah, the major, one of the other major changes is, or not changed, but emphasis is not only providing the services to our users, but also the contract, the funding arrangements through Oakland County are brand-new to this agreement. My previous agreement had no real direct way to address it other than outside funding. So we got pretty specific on this one about the funding path. Mike?
Our local communities here, we have a lot of capital invested in, and we don't want to make sure we ever lose that base.
Absolutely, absolutely. And I think Lynn will agree that that, I bend her ear with that concern every so often, just to make sure that we're, you know, we want to take care of our people, but we also have to take care of our assets and investments, so.
And Chris and Jack, thank you very much for returning us looking at it for us.
Yeah, for sure. Unfortunately, trust has eroded between the county and the CBT, or the villages and townships. And so we have to really watch our back more now than ever, unfortunately.
I agree. So did we, did we vote on that?
Um, thank you. Sure, we didn't, oh, it was Chris and Mike made the motion, but we didn't actually.
We made a roll call on this one.
Yeah, we'd like a roll call again.
Okay.
Please, thank you.
McDonald?
Yes.
Flood?
Yes.
Breakfield?
Yes.
Ferrari?
Yes.
Curtis?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Mocheer?
Yes.
Barnett?
Yes.
Hildendorf?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. Lynn already touched on the building renovation update. There is a diagram reflecting the latest revisions that we were introduced to at our last meeting. Lynn, if you want to make a comment or?
Yes, so we did make a few adjustments. Looking, talking to Bob, our construction manager, he thinks that we're gonna be able to do the two lifts and build it into the existing budget that we have. So we built, we built this into this plan, but we did move it. So we actually extended out the offices a little bit more because we found that we were not having any excess. And so we wanted to make sure we had a few, you know, excess offices to grow into. So we moved it out maybe 12 feet. We changed around just some of the office, like the offices against the walls will have windows and then with glass panels to come through to let the light through. The middle area that you see with, will be the other dispatch area, there'll be a conference room, and we added a female, an extra female bathroom, just seemed like that's, the need was there. And then we have the maintenance, it's gonna be in the suite A with a little maintenance office added there. And then the back half is pretty much gonna be open. We're gonna have the back area that's gonna be a bus wash, not a formal one, but it's a drive-through like with a wet willys wand and vacuums and whatnot that you can pull through. And the rest of it will be space for parking at this point. The area that's existing will be the, like a driver's room that they can hang out in. There's like a little kitchen area. Above that will be a mezzanine. And then there'll be actually a shower added to the one unisex bathroom in the back. So that's kind of the plan.
Refresh my memory, I'll remember all the specs, we just have some to change. Do we have to install the air exhaust systems on there like we do our fire stations?
We do. So in the back half, we have them in the front. They're gonna have to be moved because we're moving out the walls.
You currently have already?
We have them in the part A where we currently have them, but we're gonna have to move them because we're replacing them with offices. And we're gonna have to put drains in, in the back, sprinklers and also exhausts, so we can pull the vehicles in.
Do we use the existing one we have now and just add on to it?
Yes, and the, the good thing is the sprinkler system that we had put in to A, when Bob knew that we had the whole building, but we weren't using it, he built a big enough line to accommodate, so we don't have to tap that into the line. We can use the existing line to just carry it forward, so that it should be a lot cheaper.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, have you presented this to the village council or village?
Oh, they're, the permits, the final specs are coming for the electrical and mechanical, so we don't actually get the final drawing until October 27th. That's when they're gonna go to the permits.
Okay, 'cause you're increasing your water usage and drainage and, you know, they may have a little bit to say about that.
I think we, when we, we did plan ahead at the, at the time that we did all of the improvements the first time around. So I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll have that covered, Jack, but again, we don't have the specs in front of us, so.
Does Tom Booger still have any specs?
He's, that's the village.
Okay.
Time used to just the township.
Kerry's got a question.
Just have a question.
Kerry.
You said that they indicated that it would still be within the original not-to-exceed amount that was mentioned in the August meeting?
Yes. We're hoping. I haven't, I haven't gotten the final budget yet because he still has to, we have to get the final plans and then he's gonna have to go up to bid to the vendors. But his estimate is that we're gonna be able to do that, so hopeful.
Okay, if there's nothing further, we'll move on to, you don't need any action, there's really nothing to do here. Okay, and then old business, nine C, vehicle camera RFP update. I can tell you right up front that you remember here, Smart's involved. Go ahead.
It's just been a big waiting game. It's been very frustrating. I, I sent them the updated, all the RFP documents that they wanted before I went on vacation. It was like mid-September and we still, they still haven't looked at it. I spoke with someone finally today. They said it's on her desk. She's looking at it today. We're gonna hopefully get it to you tomorrow or Monday. Just really hoping that this goes through. They're, they're hoping that we can get this on the Mitten website on Wednesday. So that's what our, hopefully go-live date is. They're suggesting that we have it out there for a month. Minimum is two weeks. They're suggesting a month. I originally had put a three-week time in there, but we'll, we'll talk to them further and it's gonna be about that. So we're hoping to then, you know, based on the timeline to maybe, it'll be November 20th or so is when, when we're then gonna have to do the review of the proposals and then go through and do the demos and whatnot to determine, you know, which provider they're gonna have. And then it takes about four to six weeks for the installation. The issue is that we're coming up right against the same time that we're gonna be starting construction. So we might be needing an additional facility to, like an indoor facility, like temporarily to do these installations. So if anyone from the community has any extra spaces that we can maybe rent or use temporarily.
Just like one at a time?
Yeah, they're hoping to, I think they can do like, I mean.
Oh, they just cycle.
They can cycle them through, right?
Yeah, we probably could, yeah, we probably could help.
Okay, that would be great. I was wondering.
Well, DP, yeah, DPW or even the, our parks bar and out at Friendship, but yeah, we could help.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you, Chris.
And we're, and we're still funded.
For a small fee.
And budgetarily, we're all set.
Yes.
We've got 150 plus the 44 that was carryover.
Plus we have grant money of 140 that we have to use. So with this RFP, we have to split it out into two projects. Smart allowed us to do it, which is, took a long time for us to get the pass for agreement. But there'll basically be two projects. We're gonna do one project with just the Smart-owned vehicles, that's gonna be our grant money. And so they said do those first, finalize it, get a bill, and then we can separate it and then we'll do, start with our vehicles. So that way we can keep the money separate and follow the grant guidelines.
Okay. If nobody has any questions, we'll move on to new business. Item A, this is the meat and potatoes right here, folks. We need to protect ourselves, perform our services in the manner we customarily do so. And we're being offered a five-year contract this time, which is the longest we've seen to date. Perhaps it would be good, Lynn, if you have any specific points, we could touch on them or concerns.
You know, there really is, has not, not a lot of changes. There really are not a lot of changes in this agreement. The funding is very similar to what we've had in the past. The 26 budget is 8,747,311, but it includes a 1.7 million dollar carryover. So that nets to like 6.9 million, which is pretty close to our 25 budget of 6.6. So it's very close to what we had gotten before. It is a five-year contract.
If you find, tell me what page you're looking at.
Oh, this is 10A.
Look at where you're looking.
Sure.
Has our Noda thirty reviewed this yet?
To my knowledge, no.
No.
That is part of the process. And in fact, I think that's what we need to do, is to do that formally, along with have each of our communities review it and, and send any comments or requirements, requests on to both Lynn and your, and your attorney, you know, make sure.
We can't vote on this tonight.
No, 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 we're kicking off.
Timewise.
Yeah.
We're just got, when they're looking to have this done.
Well, it's end of the year.
Another end of the year one.
Yeah.
It is. It's the end of the year.
Okay.
I got it Lynn.
That's right.
One of 13.
Yes, yes. Oakland, yeah, Oakland County had their ad hoc committee meeting today, actually at three. So Emma went, this is like the first time where they're reviewing it. So I was watching it remotely until I had to leave. And it looked like Dave Woodward was questioning the five-year. You've said he would really prefer a three-year contract with two one-year extensions. So there was some conversation, but I had to leave to come here. So I didn't find, I didn't see what it actually final, what the final outcome was. I think that they're hoping to bring it to the Board of Commissioners in November, but it may go till December. A lot of times they cancel their November meeting and whatnot, so I'm not sure when it's gonna go through.
If the funding disappears, Lynn, does this still in effect?
If the funding.
I got the whole ax on my tax thing floating around. If that were to be passed?
If the funding.
Disappears.
You mean the Oakland County?
Taxes are gone. Would we still be obligated to perform these services?
There's a motion out there with ax your tax. Oh, getting rid of property tax.
Oh.
If that, if that gets on the ballot and passes, Joe's concern is, are we gonna be stuck with 13 million dollars a year and have no funding? That's all to be way out there.
That's why I make sure that we're there as long as the funding's there. If their funding goes away, I don't, tell me guys, you're on the hook.
If, if there may be a clause that could be added for conditions that change, good point, excellent actually. And that's what, that's why unfortunately, we need to act quickly. So if, if we can take this proposed plan, and I'm, I'm just gonna digress for a moment. The fact that Dave Woodward was talking about a three-year contract with two renewables, it's almost a slap in the face to the providers, not just us, because we have met every requirement they have. And to be looking at that kind of conditional approval, given the amount of experience they have with us now and what they've seen us do, it's, it's not only reflected in, in his comments, but if you, when you have a chance to look through the, the implementation plan that they're looking at as well, it's much like I said last, at our last meeting, they're still talking about eventually having only two providers, Smart and one other entity, which would assumedly be a conglomeration of what, what we're doing, of, of the original partners. But I don't think there's But I don't think there, I don't think we can count that there's any guarantee that that will happen. I can't imagine another entity wanting to get into the transportation business because it's, 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 you don't make money providing transportation. If it weren't for grants and funding, the federal funding and that, we'd all be walking if, if you needed a bus or a ride, so.
For long, isn't it? Isn't it, we voted in with a ten-year millage?
It's a ten-year millage, right.
And we're in our, what, second year?
Third, this is third, and so we're gonna go out five. Our, um, our internal NODA agreement, the IGA, we went.
To twenty thirty-three, one year past.
One year past their termination of the millage so that, or it'll need renewal. Just so that we'd be prepared to and organized, assuming that we'll get the full ten years. Okay, so I, I had to emphasize that because it's a very real and concrete possibility that they're gonna start pressuring us. And if they should do that, we need to hold their feet to the fire on software and cooperation. Because if we let Smart drive it, we're not, we're not gonna be able to, they're not gonna be able to reach their goal. It has to be a, a real effort on behalf of all, of all the parties, not just one or two. So, okay, I'm sorry. So, anything, anything else?
The only thing is, I can't find it right now, but I, I had it highlighted earlier where they want you to agree to this plan. So the, this HNTB plan, so that was part of my concern, is that, that they had verbiage that, you know, you're agreeing to follow this Oakland County Transit Plan, which is consolidating these things. So it's kind of built in. It's, um, and so that's what we had a, and we can talk about it, 'cause I think it's in the next agenda item about this transit plan.
Do you wanna motion on this somehow?
I, I think it would be appropriate for the.
Just to receive and file.
And make sure that it goes to our member communities, that, that the boards get this, and the attorneys, really.
This one?
I'm taking it to the board on November twelfth.
Okay.
Oh, but to Brittany?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think.
I'd like you to add that comment that in case the revenue does stop the taxes.
Okay.
We gotta be covered some way. There's gotta be something in there to protect us.
Okay, who made the motion?
Who made it?
Chris. Okay, sorry, Chris. All right. Have you got it, Lynn?
Was it Chris and who was the second? Oh, Mike.
Big mom. And we're just receiving and filing, yeah, and we're gonna send it to our board.
And attorneys.
But just, just from very recent past history, you know, we'll, we'll see if there's, I, I mean, I just read through it really high level, but, you know, we had the problem with assessing or with sheriff's contracts with assessing. We're not a, a water, um, we're not part of the WRC, but they haven't allowed us to amend anything so far. So I don't know if they're gonna allow us to make any changes. If Woodward has anything to do with it, we won't be able to.
We still have to make the effort.
Yeah, I agree. We're gonna, um, yeah.
I'm curious to see what the attorneys had to say on it, you know. They're gonna protect our interests, our attorneys.
Exactly.
Exactly, and that's.
Just like they tried, we tried to with the sheriff's contract and assessing, we didn't make.
We didn't win anything.
They just passed it to us and said, sign it or go start your own police department.
But we got our own notice.
This might be different 'cause we have assets and things.
Exactly.
But we also had a police station too.
Well, that's true.
But anyway, okay, try, but you're gonna send this to Brittany to review for both of us?
Eli did make the notice. He's like, well, if you don't sign, there's, you don't get the check January one, you know, so that's kinda.
That's the, uh, I, intergovernmental agreement.
No, 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 this is.
No, this is.
This is the.
This is the.
This is the Oakland.
The five-year contract, yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, N A.
Okay, so we have a motion to receive and file for action from the member communities?
And one more question for Lynn. I mean, you're gonna go through, like, 'cause what we won't know, our attorneys from the Kelly firm, they're not gonna know the numbers. I mean, you're, you're gonna have to tell us if these numbers make sense as to what we've been getting paid.
Yes.
I E. We're not getting screwed.
No, this is, um, actually, it comes right from my budget. So dealing with that part has been really actually pretty.
So, you know, we'll look at the other language for our attorneys as well, but as far as like the numbers, they're not gonna know if that's, those are the right numbers or not.
Those are correct.
Okay.
Yeah, those are correct.
Okay, um, so we have motion and second. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay. This one also strikes to what I said. Lynn, go ahead with the, any update you wanna make on the, the HNTB transit plan draft.
So this is a, a very rough draft. It's not completed. I just, I shared, I didn't include it all into the board packet because it's not finalized. But I wanted, I did email it out earlier, was it last week, when we had our meeting, just to share it with you so you could start to review. Uh, we had a meeting with the four local providers, not with Smart, with Oakland County and HNTB, which is a consulting firm they hired last week to kind of just do first thoughts, and so we all brought our concerns about it. They're really, um, they've kind of set it up as, um, they, they came out one day to review each of the local providers so that it's not like they got a lot of understanding of us. They gathered a lot of data. Um, and they really are suggesting, um, which I kind of included here, like three packages. There's package one, two, and three. Um, package one is our current four LSPs, local service providers and Smart. And, um, package two is two local service providers and Smart. Package three is one and Smart. And so they, they were really pushing this, um, package three, saying this is gonna be this consolidation. That is gonna be happening after the next millage election, so that's not gonna really go into, into effect until they pass the next one in twenty thirty-two. So it looks like that will, and it will take some time. It sounds like it's not gonna be immediate, but, um, there's some short-term, midterm, uh, long-term like phases of implementation that have been kind of spelled out. The short-term ones are kind of aligning policies and fares and whatnot and dispatch systems, which we're currently doing anyway. The midterm, you have a little bit more coordination with shared planning, joint procurements. Uh, they wanna do a facility evaluation, you know, kind of thing. I think they're looking to see, do we wanna keep all of the facilities? Do they want them to be satellites? Do they wanna have one, one main one? You know, um, I think that's something that they're reviewing ongoing this HNTB. But the concerns that the local providers came is that we didn't really like the way that we were looking. They really, they showed that we are like, almost like poor, like we're rated very low, even though our survey results are ninety-five plus, you know, in our ratings from them, so we asked them to go back and rewrite it because it really doesn't reflect our current, um, the way we're currently operating. So they agreed to do that, so they're gonna go back and rewrite that. And also the fact that, um, it was very unclear, uh, if this was gonna be a takeover, is this going to be a consolidation? Is this gonna be, you know, can we be clear as far as what your intentions are? Are you sure it's not gonna be Smart wanting to take over all of it? Eli assured me, Eli's now the vice chair on Smart's board, um, which is good. But he's assuring me that's not what they want at all, but they have to have Smart separate because they're the designated recipient. And so they will stay in their area, but the other four local providers, um, take up like seventy-three percent of Oakland County. So we take up the majority of land area, you know, Smart is in a very, uh, you know, urban area, you know, down in the, um, southeast corner, so that's primarily for populations at, right? So they would stay and they're looking at consolidating. So they did agree that they would, um, kind of go back and rework it and, um, bring another draft to us. So they, they used, they, they claimed to be very open to suggestions and changes, but we'll see what they end up doing. So, um, I brought some concerns about, you know, what is like local control and governance? It's then, um, if we consolidate, are all the boards gonna go away? You know, they said it's a possibility kind of thing. I'm not sure if there'll be a need for it. It's kind of what the, you know, it's not really spelled out particularly. I also brought up the recognition of our notice pre-millage net position, you know, like if it was, um, if we consolidated, you know, how is that recognized? And we should, you know, have it, we have to be mindful of that if they were to consolidate, that there was, you know, pre-millage, Oakland County millage assets that, um, need to be dealt with. And, um, and then also, you know, just, uh, how the consolidation would have packed our facilities, our staffing. They're looking at possibly consolidating, you know, um, administrative facility, you know, uh, jobs and whatnot. So I asked, you know, what, what was the job loss expectation, you know, for each of our communities that you're expecting? And, you know, but they really didn't have answers for that yet, so it's all very high level.
Are they gonna dictate to you at some point that, um, now HR all comes out of central office and whoever does HR is just not gonna be paid for anymore?
It could very well be.
Yeah.
It could very well be.
The, the county is not communicating at all with us.
I don't know how we're supposed to respond to this 'cause, you know, it would be a lot for, it's a lot for you and you work here every day. I mean, we just see this, I'm gonna be honest, I.
Right.
I don't know if this is good, bad, or indifferent, all these things.
It's just.
So, I mean, I think what I'm saying is, if it's not good, you need to tell us and we can try to use our political pressures, if we have any left, to push back. I mean, that's what they're gonna do. I mean, that's what they've sort of said is, the savings comes from not, you know, it's the sheriff's office model. You don't need, you need one HR department. You don't need one at every police station. You need one payroll. You don't need one at every, you know, AP payer, you know, so, but, I mean, I don't know.
I kinda wanna add what Chris is saying here because this was prepared by you, Lynn, and it says, "The plan goal is to eliminate township barriers." I don't know of any township barriers other than our animosity towards them taking us over.
That's a perfect reflection of their attitude, though. That's the attitude the commission has.
Future consolidation may eliminate independent boards and decision-making authority. The next one down is potential facilities consolidation. So what I'm reading here is going, what I've said is, why do we have a NODA board? But you're trying to protect your assets, but in the same time, we're getting rid of it all.
And, you know, we have to look at it from an efficiency point of view, of course. When you acquire, when you merge organizations, you don't, you get rid of the redundancy.
But if we're a contracted organization.
And that makes sense from a business point of view.
From a business point of view, it makes sense, but we are a contracted service to the county.
And that's exactly how they're treating.
What Dave Woodward said, sorry to interrupt, Mike.
No, 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 go ahead.
When this all went down and we were not supporting, I mean, I, I don't, millage didn't pass up these parts. We said, you know, he kept saying, you're just gonna be a service, a contractor. You guys get, they, we admit, you guys work efficiently, frankly, probably more efficiently than Smart. And so we're just gonna pay you and you just keep doing everything. But this to me seems like that's not what they're saying now.
Thanks for the building. Thanks for all your help. Thanks for everything else. See you later. Bye.
Goodbye.
Well, that, that's.
Losing it, but.
That's an eventuality that we may, we may face. If, if they, if they figure or find, think they have a way to operate in the whole county with one or two providers, we're protecting our assets. You know, that's, that's part and parcel of this. Speaking of which, seventy-five-hundred dollars lease, how come they're only paying us seventy-five-hundred dollars lease for NODA, the county? In our, in their budget document, building rent lease, seventy-five-hundred?
Oh.
Am I wrong?
You know what? There is, that's actually zero. Um, it's snow removal landscaping. That was when we were, um, yeah.
Building rent lease?
That's, there's actually.
Oh, okay, I see. You don't have a zero there.
Yeah, there's.
Well, zero's worse than seventy-five-hundred. But I mean, that's, my point is, we're absorbing the wear and tear of not only operating, but expansion, et cetera. And we're really not even profiting or staying even because we're, we're picking all that up, up on our own and it's our depreciation. We're depreciating.
Sure.
And not being compensated for it. Am I wrong?
Well, we do have depreciation included in the budget, so we do, we do include that as part of their budget that they pay for. So they are building that into the budget.
Be interesting to know if it's really realistic.
First thing I saw was that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry, Joe.
Somebody started this whole thing with, oh, what if before, no, no, myself, I don't have any interest in this. I saw how it was all, I could play it all out of my head. I lived it with Smart. Bigger's not always better. I have it here. We concentrate on service to our people. Once you centralize it, Pontiac, which it was with Smart. Oxford's the same as White Lake, same as Milford, same as South Lion. We don't. We concentrate on Oxford or New Hampshire. We concentrate on ours. I'm not, I hope Milford does well. Oh, White Lake does well, Farnale, Pontiac. I hope they do well. That's not my issue. If you want us to provide this, I'd rather keep it at the local level. We have control over it. Let's say.
Well, that's why I brought it up.
They say, we like Eli, Lynn, you're gone. Eli's gonna run everything. That's exactly what could happen. Now we have control over how we're spending it, where things are going.
Right.
Look, we just saw the building. You become part of Smart now. You're not gonna see any of this kind of stuff.
Well, we were forced into the situation because they passed a millage. I mean, it was a ghost, a ghost organization. There was no organization. There was no transit.
No plan.
Anything, no plan. And we made that quite clear, which didn't make us friends either, but, you know, that's the truth. This is the eventuality that we have to recognize, and that's, it's good that we're doing it now. We don't wanna be five years from now looking at, and then county comes and says, uh, we're gonna let your territory be taken over by, oh, just for sake of discussion, uh, our neighbor, our older OPC. OPC says they can handle your area, so what do you wanna do? You know, bid against OPC? No. So we're facing that, though. Realistically, that's what we're facing. So as long as we're all conscious of that.
Well, I take it one step further. If you see these things happening, you have to tell us, specifically the electives.
Yeah.
Because then we can go down to the county commission meetings and caucus meetings, which we've been at multiple times, and we have not been successful. But to at least say, one year, two years, three years ago, you told us, we run more efficient than Smart. We know our service areas. We provide excellent service and we're more efficient. You said it, we're cheaper. You're gonna just pay us to run our system. That's what we're, like, before the decisions are made, if we feel like it's going that way, we need to go down there and pound the table and get in the Oakland press and, and on there's a new page that, that is, um, shine the light on them a lot, what they're doing down there. I mean, we have to use political pressure. So you, but I, I can't, I mean, this, this is like reading a foreign language to me, what they're proposing, 'cause I'm not in the, your business every single day. But if you feel like our control is going away, we will be, I'm volunteering, me and Jack, and anybody else that's interested, but Jack has to come with me. But we will go, I mean, we need to know. Like, we need to go down there and get Mike Inge involved and Mike Spiz and the people that represent us on the county commission to at a minimum bring it up and talk about it publicly down there. Otherwise, otherwise, if you haven't ever watched a county commission meeting, it's the one of the wildest meetings you'll ever watch. It's compared, I'd compare it to the English Parliament, where they yell and scream at each other, and then they go in the back room, make deals and come out and vote on stuff. It's, it's, it's wild. Nothing like any of our meetings. But that will happen, and it'll happen in one meeting, and it'll be over. And it happened on Thanksgiving last year for our police contracts, and nobody even knew, we weren't even invited. So if you catch any wind, you don't have to be the bad guy, but please, text, call, this is important. I don't think this looks good. There's a caucus meeting at the Transportation Caucus of the County Commission, and that's where the deals are made. Some of them are televised and a lot of them are quietly, you know, closed doors.
One final observation.
And I know we're being recorded.
We're, we have, we do have, um, partners in, in as much as they are also providers, the other providers. Now, PEX is a private.
People's Express. It's a, it's a nonprofit.
It's.
But they operate out of, um, multiple counties.
So they may, they may or may not want, be interested, but I think we need to really start working closely with our partners.
WODA, WODA definitely is fighting.
With WODA and with OPC. I, OPC may not recognize the threat. Or, or.
They have a brand-new director there, so he does, he's just getting cut out because, um, so there's, but WODA's very involved, WODA.
Yeah, so, so I think that's important, that, that we keep that or emphasize that relationship so that it's not, it's not three townships trying to tell the county, we don't like it. It's the, the providers all working together, um, to do that, you know, to make the, raise awareness. And I think certainly this, the discussion we had today should be relayed to them as well, what we've seen, what we're seeing in this draft plan. Okay, and we'll rely on our director to do that.
Okay.
Well, and also we need to talk to. Well, and also we need to talk to People's Express, W O D A, like you said, like, we need to say, if we feel like they're having conversations and we are not included, we being all the contractors, like, we need to call Rick Hamel. We have relationships with all these supervisors to say, you know, there's strength in numbers when we, when we show up. But you have to, please activate us. And if you do it quietly, you can text us or whatever, but then we will get our troops going.
Perhaps formalizing a meeting?
With all of the
A meeting, a regular meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Type of thing?
Yeah.
I'm assuming they're nervous too.
Yeah, they are. No.
And, and frankly, I don't think the county needs to be invited unless there's something that they need to ask the county on the behalf of their organizations. So
I like that.
I, I just don't see, uh, and this is directly in response to this, like this tentative report, this draft report. Let's, let's not sit idly by and just see what happens. And I think Chris makes an excellent point. Everybody has that's spoken to it. So, and beyond that, there's really nothing we can do.
I'm going to receive and file the draft update.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Okay.
I think Mr. Flood
Mike did it.
Yeah. All in favor of the motion to receive and file, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no.
No.
Okay, noted. Gosh, I want to know why, but Okay. Uh, trolley update. Oh, this ought to be good. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Lynn.
We've, uh, we've been having some issues finding drivers who want to drive the trolley lately. Um, we had some late-night participants on the trolley that were causing some trouble, and some of the drivers no longer really want to deal with, um, some of the issues that they've had. We've had some illnesses from some of the, some of the drivers, so they've been out. And, um, and then just kind of lack of, of interest, because I think, um, the, that, it just doesn't have a lot of, um, people showing up unless it's a special event. So we, um, I did talk with Kim and, um, she said that the, the D D A is actually reviewing what their plans are going to be ongoing with the service. We have a contract with them until April of twenty-sixth right now. Um, we generally stop s- providing service like at the end of October. She's asked that we extend through the end of the year. Um, but I said, you know, it really is dependent on whether and whether we can get drivers. Um, I said, but we will make it, um, you know, there's, there's two big events, um, that we will make sure that we can have it as long as it's operating correctly. So that's kind of where we're at.
That's where we were a month ago, though.
Yeah, it was. She just, um, asked us to extend, um, every weekend until the end of December. And so, um, we normally just stop it in October. You know, because it, it just gets cold and I just don't even see that. I mean, even in the summer, on the Fridays, we were getting only maybe four or five people. It wasn't a very big, it's really one of the special events. So, and the fact that we are, um, I think she was disappointed because we, we've been struggling with getting drivers, but it's kind of been out of our control.
Well, maybe we should terminate the contract, give them thirty days' notice and they can figure it out, Lynn. I mean,
Yeah.
We can't dream drivers up. It's a voluntary, it's not our
Right.
main mission. It's not our, we do have some responsibility because of the contract. I know that's not what they want to hear.
Right.
But maybe a case-by-case basis?
Right.
After, after terminating?
Yeah.
Um
I, I think the two events are, are fine to do because those are big events, like the Which Is Nice next weekend and the one, there's one in Polar Express. I guess those are the two big events that they, they like to do, um.
Mike?
This contract expires April of twenty-sixth, correct?
Correct.
And like Mike said, there's a clause here, we can give them thirty-day notice.
Correct.
Do they operate the trolley in the winter time?
We generally don't, only for special events. Like, we'll just, sometimes we'll do like the parade at Christmas and, you know, like, like there's this Polar Express event. It's not really designed for winter travel.
Talking maybe six or seven months before this contract.
We're almost, almost done with this. And I think, um, I spoke with, um, someone that's on the, the board also today, works for us. And he said that they're thinking about just getting rid of the trolley up to the first of the year. So I think it's, I think it's a short-term thing. I just wanted to update.
Trolley drivers, so they pay a premium?
They are. They pay twenty-five dollars an hour.
Is that a good enough premium to them?
No, like, right now, it, I don't think it's good enough, because I think it's a lot of hassle for what they're getting, because our drivers
You had to look at it. It's a different than when I go to Kroger.
Right.
Look, we can't find anybody in the deli. Pay twenty bucks an hour, you'll find somebody in the deli.
Right, right. And we mentioned, and Rachel mentioned it to, to Kim and, uh, just to say, I think you might have to bump up your price.
Maybe get a premium to
Right, exactly.
Well, I, I told Kim we'd pay additional for November twelfth.
That's the, that's the
That's, that's our
He's requesting
Your
Oh, for that, okay, all right.
The money's a lot. Twenty-six dollars.
Oh, okay, sorry, didn't know that one. So, um, yeah, those are just issues that we're having, but, but
And when, when is your date?
We're doing, uh, November twelfth.
Okay.
It's during the week. It's
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, thirty days' notice would get us past that, but it wouldn't help them with the polar thing.
I think that's in December sometime. I forget.
I mean, it's pretty much event-driven though, right? And, and it's, if we can't get a driver, the trolley doesn't drive.
Well, but if she wants
Reliability of the trolley.
Right. And it's
Well, safety too. If our dri, if the drivers are concerned about
You can say
The interactions with passengers.
Well, we're talking about mostly events right now, though, right?
I think the events are fine.
I mean, look, I, I read the Christmas book on the Polar Express. It's all kids and
Right.
Like, I, I, I'm, I'm not, I mean, it's a, it's a cool thing to be able to use for for the, the events. And, yeah, I don't think the running in on the weekends between the two villages till midnight might not be a long sustaining thing. But I, I'm not necessarily, I think the relationship between the D D As and N O T A and having the availability to have the cool trolley for events and we own it, I, I'm, I'm not ready to, personally ready to just shelve it all together.
Do we know how many from, what is the, if you look back at the last two years for the events, do we know how many people actually use the trolley?
We do. I think I've, in the, uh, you can see from our ridership, um, data, which is like this page, I have like the trolley. So you could see month by month, um, and I, and it doesn't show for the events, but you can see like in March, you know, there's like five hundred ninety-eight, four hundred ninety-five in the month. That's just generally one month. That's usually like our, um,
Four weekends.
Marty Girl or whatever, what, what, not, um, what is, um, St. Patrick's Day, right? So there's St. Patrick's Day, right? So that's those, that's how many passengers for the month. Then that's just going to be
Pretty good.
It is, but it's event-driven. So the rest of them, it's
The events sell out.
Events sell out, right.
Prostitution in a row, I mean, it's
Right.
Mike, you had a, you had a point?
I raised that earlier with this contract expiring and how much we do in it. I, with Chris, I like, can we get by another six months? And when the contract expires, we could make a decision then. Can we get through another six months? You find the drivers?
As long as we have the drivers and they're operating.
The trolley's not running.
Right.
And we, we recognize that.
And our, in our contract allows
Driver, the trolley stays in the parking lot.
I mean, another six months and then we could
I'm not really, I wasn't really looking for action. I just wanted to let you guys know what's happening.
We got thirty-day notice.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so in our contract does provide that if we can't do it, there's mechanical or no mech, no drivers, that we're not liable for anything.
Yeah.
So we're, we're covered. I, you know, this all started just over the, uh, funding, uh, the federal funding caveat, right? About using
Oh, oh, with the special events and whatnot.
Yes.
But this is different because it's owned by the D D A. Actually, the D D A owns it, so it's not, it's not ours.
Clarification on that for sure.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right.
So do you need a motion or just go ahead?
No.
No.
Just receive and file it, the report.
That sounds good to me.
I make that motion.
I'll second it, Mike.
All right, Mr. Breakfield, second. Any questions on what we're doing, receiving and filing, the update? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay. Public comments, any? Hearing none, uh, motion to
I'm going to receive and file the monthly rider and manger reports.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion and second. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Very good. Board member comments? We'll start with our new member. Sorry, not to put you on the spot, but got some thoughts, some initial thoughts?
Um, learning, um, I'm learning, um, but I do really enjoy seeing the N O T A bus at Kroger. Today, there was an elderly woman and the driver was helping her on. And, um, it's there all the time, so, um, I
That's a core, core value for us.
It's, it's, it's really, really wonderful to see. I mean, it's there. I don't know if I'm there a lot, but but it's always there when I'm there. Um, so I do enjoy that. And thank you for having me. I will be in Washington, D.C. the next meeting for a convention, uh, my national convention, so I will not be here.
Okay, well, thank you for that.
And I will be getting my continuing education.
Okay.
Credits after forty years. I still have to do that.
Well, congratulations on that.
But thank you so much for welcoming me. And it's been wonderful.
Very good. Thank you. Mike?
I want to welcome our new members. And, uh, what's coming up now, October? I don't know where you need some. We still got the Veterans Day, I think, before our next meeting, so remember Veterans on Veterans Day. That's it.
All right. Carrie?
Not much other than have a safe and happy Halloween.
No comment.
Joe?
No comment.
Chris?
Nothing today. Good to see you. Um, I lied, I do have, um, you know, Thursdays are, I, I thank you to Mike and Carrie for representing the township. Uh, Thursdays are the days we cut ribbons and there's always, so the bigger businesses, I usually try to be there. Today, I skipped cottage and pizza, even though I could have gone for a nice pizza, but I met you all, so. Thanks to the amazing township team. They're, they're smarter than me anyway, so.
Okay, um, we good? Is there a motion then?
Make a motion adjourned. Sport. Aye.
Okay, there you go. All in favor?
Aye.